So by my clock, it is seven oh one, we will call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Let's start with the real call.
Councilman Becker?
Here.
Councilman Hartwick?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Shear?
Here. Agenda item three is public hearings. This evening, we have none. Agenda item four is public comments. Just as a reminder, the city council received comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be your name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. Do you have anyone signed up for public comments?
Not in person.
This will be a first call for public comments either in person or via Zoom. This is a second call for public comments. This is a third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move right along. Agenda item five is the consent agenda. Just a reminder that the consent agenda that is outlined is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed items five A through five F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. The motion carries. Agenda item six is petitions, requests, and communications. Six A is the review and possible action relating to proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
I will go ahead and read the proclamation and then council president pro tem Bruce Johnson will present it to our Parks and Recreation Director Brooke Francine, who's in the audience. So I will go ahead and start. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Fort Atkinson. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, dance, community programs, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, such as youth center, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provides a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Fort Atkinson recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I Christopher Shear, City Council President of the city of Fort Atkinson, do hereby recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fort Atkinson and encourage all residents, visitors, and guests to enjoy the city's parks, aquatic center, and recreational programming in July and throughout the year. Proclaim this fifth day of July, two thousand and twenty-two. Just keep it for now. We got to get it signed for you.
I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a well-deserved proclamation. Our Parks and Rec is integral to to so much of what happens within our city. So well deserved. Any other discussion or comments? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The motion carries. Six B is the recognition of the retirement of Amy Lutske after twenty-four years of service to the Dwight Foster Public Library.
So Eric couldn't be here tonight, so I have a few words to recognize Amy. And then Bruce Johnson will present her plaque and we'll have another moment for photos. So Amy has served the library and the community for twenty-four years. She has served as the adult services librarian as well as the assistant director. Amy was the point person for hiring an amazing staff of part-time people over the years, some of which have gone on to be professional librarians themselves. She was pivotal as the library transitioned over the years, dealing with changes in technology, building projects, and new service development. Without her efforts in all of these, the library would not be the loved part of the community that it is today. Amy's work extended outside the confines of the library as well. She helped countless groups and organizations within the community, such as the Science Fair, Genealogy, and other clubs, the U.S. Veterans Project Library, and Friends Organizations. Her thumbprint is on the community, as you see Lorraine Nedecker's poetry on the walls downtown and in the hallways of the schools. As she was a critical piece of the formation of the Friends of Lorraine Nedecker. Amy has left a high bar of professionalism, integrity, and focus on serving others for the rest of the staff at the library to preserve for many years to come. Thank you for your service, Amy, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Amy. You're such a big part of our library, being the welcoming, beautiful, resourceful place that it is. So I know just from talking with staff and being in there with my boys, you are already missed by by the crew there. So thank you for everything you did. It was a you helped make it a really great place for people to be. So thank you.
I'm sure there are volunteer and other positions available if that. Very good.
Thank you, Amy. Moving along to six C is the presentation of the city of Fort Atkinson financial statements and supplemental information for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
There is. Can you hear me? Okay. Thanks for your time this evening and thanks for having Baker Tilly as your auditor. My name is Andrea Jansen, and I'm the partner on the city's audit. Wanted to make just a few high-level comments before I dig into the financial highlights that you should have in front of you. So first, there were no new auditing standards, no new accounting standards to implement for two thousand and twenty-one. So that's good. For the financial statement document itself, which is the largest document of the ones that you have from us. Page Roman numeral one is the independent auditor's report or the opinion. And it is reordered a little bit this year, and there's some additional information related to responsibilities for the audit. But but the thing I wanted to point out, just as a reminder, that essentially your grade for your audit hasn't changed since last year. You'll notice that there's an adverse opinion on the discreetly presented component unit. That relates to the Fort Atkinson Historical Society, and because that entity is not audited, we're not able to pull it into the financial statements. And so because that information is considered to be a component unit of the city and it's missing, there's an adverse opinion on that omission. So the information, the rest of the opinion units, the information that is contained in your financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion on that, which is the highest level of assurance that we're able to give. As you may know, there were a handful of operational changes within the city for two thousand and twenty-one. New funds, some things pulled out of the general fund, grants, new revenue debt, capital activity, new utility rates, all kinds of stuff. So that did result in some additional audit efforts, some additional adjusting entries, which we'll see, and some additional reporting and disclosure requirements. So the reporting and insights document, otherwise known as the Communication Reporter Management Report, wasn't going to cover this in detail, but certainly if there are pieces of it that you would like me to cover in more detail, happy to do that or can answer questions at the end. Most of this is required communications and similar to last year. Page six is where we talk about internal control matters, pages six and seven. One item noted internal controls related to retainages at year end. There was an adjusting journal entry related to construction re-changages, which resulted in a control item. And then on page seven, it talks about a material weakness related to financial statement close, which is because we prepare the financial statements and we found material audit adjustments. This is really common for municipalities of your size, not something that you need to correct, but is something that we're required to report to you. On page twenty-four of this report is where we list both the uncorrected misstatements and material corrected misstatements. As I mentioned, just due to the all the changes and new things that were going on at the city this year, I think that list probably looks a little bit longer than it has in the past, but mostly just reclassification and getting things in the right spot for financial reporting. And then the the last section of this report is the two-way audit communications, and that's really forward-looking to next year's audit. If there are any matters that you think we should be aware of, you're welcome to contact any one of us on the audit team. And we're we're happy to have those discussions with you. So then moving into the financial highlights for two thousand and twenty-one. There's a separate handout for this. I don't. Does everyone have it online? So page one of this handout is looking at the general fund fund balance. And as you know, the general fund is your primary operating fund, and the fund balance is what you've got when you take your assets minus your liabilities in sort of simplified terms there. The total fund balance for the general fund at the end of the year is about seven point four million dollars. That is a decrease from last year, but because of some of those intentional things that you shifted out of the general fund. And then we've got a breakdown by category, starting at the bottom of that chart, your non-spendable fund balance, which is just as it sounds, it's made up of assets that aren't in spendable form. Think of advances to other funds, land held for resale, prepaid items. So that balance is is really similar to last year. Restricted restricted fund balance, excuse me, is related to unspent debt at the end of the year. There is an equipment purchase that floated over into two thousand and twenty-two. Assigned fund balance is about eight hundred and thirty thousand at year end. This is your non-lapsing accounts, some equipment replacement, and the payment in lieu of taxes for the subsequent year. And then the unassigned fund balance is about three point five million, which is up from last year, and that is money that has not been earmarked for any specific purpose. So below the chart, we look at the summarized income statement. That's essentially how you got from the eight point six roughly million in fund balance to the seven point four million this year. You can see your actual revenues about ten point two million were over budget. And the expenditures and other financing uses of about eleven point five million were slightly over budget as well. So that resulted in a change in fund balance of about one point three million, which is just ahead of the the net loss that you had planned. And if you're looking for more details of what makes that up, that starts on page fifty-seven of the financial statement document. Moving on to page two, we are still looking at the general fund fund balance. We're really keen in on that unassigned general fund balance amount. That's not earmarked for a specific purpose. You can see the chart has a comparison of your actual unassigned general fund balance compared to your budgeted expenditures of about thirty-seven percent at year end. This is up from the prior year and is slightly above your policy range. The thing I'll I'll note here is you may want to, with all of the changes in the general fund, you may want to take a look at your policy and your range and decide if that still makes sense going forward, just with with all of those changes, because you are looking at a percent of your budgeted expenditures, which in theory should be less going forward than it was previously. But a very healthy balance, so no concerns.
Is there a recommendation from you guys based on those changes of potentially what that adjusted range should be?
We talked about it a little bit at the exit conference with Michelle and Rebecca. I guess my my one recommendation would be if you're going to pull in anything outside of the general fund, you know, thinking about library, just make sure that you're looking at things that are stable. So I would caution you against pulling in like a capital project fund into the ratio, because that does cause some variability. And you may also want to check with your financial advisor, because they would be able to advise you on, you know, where you want to land as far as when you're issuing debt, what they're looking for. So page three, we'll switch gears now and talk a little bit about your general obligation debt. The the chart on this page has three things outlined. The black line at the top is your general obligation debt limit per state statute. And that is just over fifty-five million at year end. That is five percent of your equalized value. So good to see that line trending upward. The green line in the middle is your policy maximum, which is sixty percent of your state statutory limit. And then the the bottom green line, about sixteen point three million dollars in general obligation debt outstanding at year end. So that's twenty-nine percent of your legal debt limit. Just seeing the the margins are growing in between your policy maximum and your actual debt as well as to the state statutory limit. So that looks healthy, no concerns there. Under the chart, you'll also see the breakdown by type. So you've got some general obligation debt related to your city funds and some general obligation debt related to your utility funds. You've also got just over four million dollars in revenue debt for the utilities, which is not factored into this calculation. And if you're looking for additional metrics comparisons to others, there's a link to the Wisconsin Policy Forum on the bottom of that page that will take you to more information than you can probably ever want. So page four, we're still talking about debt service. We're still talking about debt here, but we're looking at what you're spending on debt, the principal and interest that you're paying on debt. And we're comparing that as a ratio to your non-capital expenditures. So you're at about fourteen point eight percent. When I look at that green line, that trend over the last five years, really pretty stable overall and no concerns there. We've got some comparative metrics on the chart as well for other communities of your size. And you're pretty well below those other municipalities. So again, no concerns there. We did adjust the principal for any current refunding, so as not to double, don't bet that. So page five, we will move into the utility funds, the first one being the water utility. At the top of this page, just a reminder that your water utility rates are set by the PSC. And they do, when they help you set your rates or when they approve your rates, they do build in a rate of return on your capital investment. So that's what you're seeing, your actual rate of return for versus the authorized rate of return of seven percent that the PSC has approved your rates in the design. The green line you you can see there on the chart is your operating revenues of about two point one million dollars for two thousand and twenty-one and operating expenditures of just under one point four million dollars. So that looks good. The trend lines look good over the last five years. No concerns there. You've got unrestricted cash reserves of about nine hundred and seventy-one thousand at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, which if you did not collect cash, you could operate for about five months. We usually say minimum of three months on hand. Investment in capital, so the the bar on the bottom is taking a look at the plant investments that you've got. How much is funded by equity? How much is funded by debt? Sixteen percent funded by debt and that no concerns there. That is a healthy ratio. Page six, some of the same information except for the utility sewer utility here. We've got three point one million dollars in operating revenues and about two point five million dollars in operating expenses for the year. You can see that's that margin is growing. So that it was a good year for the sewer utility, a lot of capital work, probably fewer dollars spent on maintenance this year. And then unrestricted cash reserves of about three point seven million at year end, fourteen months on hand there. That's a very healthy balance. Your investment in capital at the bottom, about twenty-three percent of your sewer utility plant funded by debt. But again, a very healthy ratio there. And lastly, your stormwater utility results. Smaller dollars here, five hundred and fifty-four thousand in operating revenues compared to four hundred and thirty-five thousand roughly in operating expenses. You can see twenty nineteen was really sort of your your break-even point. And since then, the trends have been moving in the right direction. So that all looks good. We've got just under six hundred thousand in unrestricted cash reserves or just over twelve months that you could operate on those reserves and investments in capital, healthy ratio here, twenty-four percent funded by debt. I will open it up for questions.
What is your, what's the recommended ratio for investment in capital? Is there, or does it kind of depend on department or utility?
It depends on a number of factors. Certainly, your operating results are healthy. You know, every your revenues are covering your expenses, so that factors in. You've got healthy cash reserves, so that factors in as well as having room to borrow if you need to borrow. So really, all of your ratios are relatively healthy there. So you know, if one of those tipped up where you had a lot of debt, or if you had, you know, your operating results didn't look the same, we would maybe pay closer attention to that. I think anything over fifty percent of debt would be something that you would definitely want to take a look at.
Another question, and Rebecca, maybe this is more for you, but just going back to the not including the Historical Society, can you just explain that a little bit more, that if it is separate enough to not be included, but isn't separate enough to not be flagged by an audit? I'm just not sure that I totally understand that that financial relationship.
So I believe it's a, is that a fiduciary fund now? I mean, is that what we're, I think we changed the name of that a while ago, right?
It's a component unit is what it technically qualifies as. So it's a separate legal entity. But there are several criteria that sort of either scope it in or scope it out. It would be a fiduciary activity if you were managing their assets, had custody of their assets, which you don't. But because there is either an ability to influence or a reliance on the city or their, you know, their purpose is to benefit the city. I would I would have to look at the exact details of how we got to through the flowchart to determine it was a component unit, but those are the sort of criteria that we look at. So if they were to get an audit, you know, we could certainly pull them in. It's just that there's a cost associated to to them having an audit. So that's my understanding of of why they have not gotten in on it.
And all of our museum funds, all of the general fund dollars or other dollars that the city spends on the museum are part of this audit.
Great, thank you.
That comes up every single year that I can recall, and you did a great job explaining it compared to what I would have been able to cough up. So I appreciate that.
I had a whole page of questions here, and I was literally putting checks mark checkmarks next to them, because as you were talking through, you were answering every single one of those questions. So I certainly appreciate that additional clarity from the extensive information that was provided. So I think my only other thing is more just a general comment that I think this is just another really good example of the incredible transparency of how our city utilizes funding and where funding goes and the financial position that that the city is in. So I would just encourage anytime folks have questions to to know this is just one additional layer to ensuring that dollars are being used correctly and and things that clearly show the strong position and and healthy position that we're in on on a lot of levels. So thank you.
I appreciate the way the the data was presented yet again, and I, one thing I hadn't really noticed in the past, but on page four, it really struck me was was just how much below the median average of other communities we are in terms of our debt service. I mean, which is really good to see. I, you know, I know ours ticked up slightly, and I know there's not a number here for two thousand and twenty-one, but I'm assuming that likely was about the same as two thousand and twenty, or maybe went up slightly again. So just good to see and a good reminder that the the city is not drowning in debt and we are trying to do do our best on utilizing our tax dollars efficiently.
Questions? Otherwise, I move to accept and file the two thousand and twenty-one financial statements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. It carries.
Thank you. Look at all my checks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to Michelle and to Rebecca for all of their help with the audit. Certainly can't do it without them and and the rest of the city staff. So thank you.
Same to you. Thank you. Job safe.
We will move on to agenda item seven, which is resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Fort Atkinson to change the zoning of the properties located at six oh three North Fourth Street, six oh nine North Fourth Street, six fifteen North Fourth Street, and four oh three McMillan Street from SR five, single-family residential to I institutional.
Thank you. As as Council President Shear mentioned, this is a request to go from SR five to institutional.
Thank you. As as council president here mentioned, this is a request to go from SR five to institutional. The rezoning follows a pretty stated number of events. Public notice was sent out to associated landowners within a hundred feet of the rezoning parcels as well as posted within the the local papers. There was a public hearing that was held on June the twenty seventh in advance of the planning commission meeting. We did have, I would say approximately six different residents spoke at that meeting. All of them with a number of questions that centered around concerns regarding drainage in the area, light pollution, noise pollution. And just a general question of what will, what will this potential Ford healthcare expansion look like? In response to this, the planning commission had a fairly good discussion about the the request, decided to move it forward to the city council recommending that the city manager prepare the first reading of the ordinance which we're having here this evening. We did ask Jim Nelson to come to the meeting. He's the representative of Ford Healthcare and would be would be happy to to have him up here and answer any questions and give a little background as to the the overall requests from Ford Healthcare.
Thanks, Andy. My name is Jim Nelson. I'm senior vice president of finance and strategic development for Ford Healthcare. Part of what's in front of you now is just kind of a, it's a continuing, ongoing development for Ford Healthcare. So Ford Healthcare has been acquiring properties around us. We we exist in a, in a residential area in order for us to grow. With the boundaries that we have, we have to acquire residences and in and as times of throughout the course of Ford Healthcare's history, this would be the third wave of us actually removing houses in order for us to accommodate growth. So last wave was back in two thousand and four when the, when we put the large addition onto the hospital, the tower that's on the north side of the building. And and actually, since that time, we've been acquiring property to the north for the block. And when the first comprehensive plan went out, we participated in the plan. And we had designated, we worked with the city to get that, the whole block to the north of the hospital designated as development for us, which would have us growing towards the remainder of the all the other medical health buildings to the north. So several clinic buildings that we have, nursing home, it's in that area. And so just made sense from a strategic standpoint for that. In the, I'm a little bit of a historian and and I've gone back through the Ford Healthcare Board minutes. Almost since its inception, when it took, when it moved on to that location in nineteen forty nine. And every decade since its construction in nineteen forty nine and the board minutes, there's always been this challenge of having a parking problem in in that area. So having enough places for patients and visitors and staff to be able to park. Part of what this plan is, is to relocate those four homes if we can relocate them into turn that area into parking. Mostly it will be staff parking. There was a question that came up from the, at the plan commission about whether or not we will seek to have Four Street vacated between the emergency room parking lot and the planned employee parking. And that's yet just to be determined. We need to fully understand kind of what that process will look like and we really want to work with the neighbors to see how that will impact them before we pursue that. So we just got a little bit of work to do before we would we'd pursue that. But I know that was a question that came up and another concern that some of the residents, some of the neighbors had put in there. So, so at this point, our goal is to relocate those houses this fall. If possible, we'd love to be able to get some tire down into their parking lot and use it for this winter. So we don't have to bus our employees, the two, three blocks where they're, where they're being bussed right now. I don't know if that's practical. That's just part of our plan. If not, we'll, we'll make that happen in the fall. A part of what Andy had mentioned as well is we have reached out to our neighbors. We've been communicating with them for quite a while. Actually, we've been communicating with them pretty closely for about twenty five years. And in what we promised them and a copy of the letter that we sent out to them last week is that as we develop that parking plan and what they'll look like, working with the city, making sure we're meeting city requirements, we'll invite the neighbors in and have them be able to critique the plan so they can see, get comfortable with it. We're hoping to meet as many of their needs as possible and in certainly address their concerns. But I mean, that's, we're, we're proud, we're targeting towards the end of August before we would have all that together. So we're looking, you know, coming back with a, you know, the designs for the parking with the plan commission towards the end of August or perhaps early September. So that's kind of in a nutshell, kind of where we're at and what we're doing. Can I answer any questions?
My question maybe is probably more for you. Jim, to your credit, that letter was really nice to see. I mean, especially, you know, I looked at the the minutes from the planning commission meeting and certainly seen the the comments and concerns or more questions maybe that that residents had. So I think for them getting that direct reach out of people knowing that your concerns were heard and and are being taken into consideration, I think is great. So I just want to confirm this. The zoning would just be changing that zoning, correct? And then there would be another process of actually approving any physical construction that would take place after that.
That's correct. So the the steps in this approval would would be the zoning approval from the council and then a site plan would be submitted by Ford Healthcare to the planning commission. And that's where we would get into talking a lot more about lighting, drainage, buffer yards and things of that nature that would would be very foremost, I think, in the minds of the the residents surrounding that area.
So there would be no concern of approving this portion before that actual parking plan was made available? Since that won't be, it sounded like till the end of
But yeah, I, we want the zoning to be approved because yeah, that allows that to go forward.
I'll also, one of the things I was gonna mention too is that for that block to the north, so we, those four houses, but there's twelve houses on that block right now. Ford Healthcare owns seven of those twelve houses. So we'll, we've made known to the neighbors that when, and actually this is how we've acquired pretty much all those houses as the neighbors have ready to move or do something different. They've contacted us and we work with them to establish a price and purchase those houses. And not only those houses, but we also own, in addition to those seven, we own some other houses around the perimeter of the hospital. Thanks.
Just to wrap that up, the the request was in keeping with the comprehensive plan, which is obviously our our largest concern with all these requests and staff did recommend moving this to a second reading for the the council this evening. I'd be happy to answer any other questions there may be.
I move to direct the city manager to prepare this ordinance for a second reading at the city council meeting on July nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We will move on to seven B, which is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Fort Atkinson to change the zoning of twelve oh five industrial drive from HI heavy industrial to MI medium industrial.
Thank you. This is the the second reading for this zoning change. I will note that the medium industrial allows self-storage as a conditional use. That conditional use request did come before the planning commission at their meeting on June twenty eighth. It was approved pending this zoning change, of course. There weren't any public, there wasn't any public input at that meeting. There was not too much discussion at the planning commission meeting either associated with that. In general, it it seems that this request has sort of moved through the steps without a whole lot of of comment from the public related to that. And I think it's in keeping with our zoning. This is where we want that self-storage to be. We haven't received anything on the staff side of 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 things from the cut, from the public, either in emails or phone calls about this request. So there really isn't a whole lot of new information to report to council on this.
This seems very straightforward to me. I'll go ahead and move to direct the city manager to prepare this ordinance for a third and final reading, say council meeting on July nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And motion carries. That takes us to seven C, which is the second reading of an ordinance annexing the territory along the southwest corner of US highways twelve and twenty six to the city of Fort Atkinson.
And again, a second reading for this annexation. The state did review this and is okay with the various criteria that the state reviews for this annexation. Staff has not had any feedback on this from from the public via email or phone calls. We would recommend moving this forward to a third reading unless council has any questions for me regarding this request.
No input from from residents one way or the other.
We had a, we had a reporter reach out today, I think, to Mr. Nelson and myself via email. That's the first that we've really heard from from anybody about this request.
Andy, my only quick question, can you just confirm for me the rural holding district that to me sounds like there is some sort of temporary to that? Or can it be a rural holding district until a decision is made about what to do with the land?
You're, you're right on both counts. That is, is a temporary zoning district for this exact type of situation where you don't know what may develop there. So in a future scenario where someone purchases the property and decides on developing it, they would come before planning commission and city council to both rezone it and submit a site plan for approval. And then we'd know what it, what it's gonna be when it grows up, so to speak.
But there's not a limit of, it would have to be rezoned to something else within five years or ten years or?
There aren't any that I'm aware of. I don't know if city manager Lamir is aware of anything on.
No, but but any future zoning decision would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
Is there any, any reason we wouldn't want to move forward with this, this annexation request?
No, it would be appropriate if the council so chooses to suspend the rules and offer a third reading tonight.
Like you might have read my mind a little bit, manager Lamir. I I just, I've been thinking a lot about this one. This is kind of an issue that's moved large during my entire tenure on the council. I think it's really vital to the long-term financial viability of the city that we get this done and seeing that this change is not really controversial. It was requested by the property owner and it's already been approved by the state of Wisconsin. I'd like to make the motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of this ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. That carries.
At that, at this point, I'd like to make the motion to approve the ordinance annexing the territory along the southwest corner of US highways twelve and twenty six to the city of Fort Atkinson.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This will also be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will take us to agenda item eight, reports of officers, boards and committees. Eight A is the city managers report.
Thank you. So the city has a capital catalyst revolving loan fund with the goal of encouraging the startup of new businesses and expansion of existing businesses. And I'm pleased to announce that the loan review committee and the economic development commission reviewed and approved the first loan through this program last week. The city is poised to make a loan to Pete's Tire within the next month or so to support a new location in Fort Atkinson. So that is something that we've been waiting on, an application, a good application, and we got one. So we're very pleased to welcome as this moves forward to welcome Pete's Tire to our our community here in Fort Atkinson. On July first, the city did switch over to our new dot gov domain name and VoIP phone system with new phone numbers. Our new phone numbers are are in effect now and our old phone numbers still work. There's been a couple of hiccups here and there, but overall, the transition has gone very well and we are continuing to get all sorts of communication in all, by all sorts of means. So everything has been successful on our end. I'm sure there's a couple more things that will have to be finished up over the next couple of weeks and then we'll determine when we can transition away from those old phones. But the dot net email addresses will still reach us for at least another year. The city has a partnership with CGI, which is a advertising firm that is creating some new promotional videos for the city. They were in town last week to film, take photos and film for those videos. So we are looking forward to a video press release being released soon, announcing those videos and then the videos upcoming within the next couple of months, they will be posted to our website. I would like just to remind everybody that the Parks and Recreation Department has released the survey for the comprehensive, comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Visit the city's website under city projects to take the electronic survey now, between now and July fifteenth. Hard copies are also available at the Parks and Recreation Office and Senior Center. We really appreciate everybody who's taken it so far, the survey, and feedback is very important in this process. So we're hopeful that people continue to, to take that survey. And we also have a a new face in the crowd today. And so I'd like to formally introduce Jedidiah Drager, who is our building inspector zoning administrator. Jed joins us from the private sector where he had, was a general contractor and independent contractor for the last twenty years. His experience in the private sector seeking permits for projects and working with customers has provided us with an excellent new perspective. Additionally, Jed has stepped into the zoning administrator role with enthusiasm and offered efficiencies within our development process. So we're pleased to have Jed as part of our team and certainly the council and the public will hear more from him in the future. I'd also like to welcome Heather Peck as a new sworn officer in the police department. We did her swearing in ceremony last week. We also welcomed Hannah Cleven as a telecommunications dispatcher and Deb Bauer as the new adult services librarian. So we're pleased to have all of these new staff members on board and part of our team. We also have a couple vacancies right now, including our water superintendent, public works crew person and assistant engineer. Check out our website for more information on on any of those possibilities. And I'd also like to thank all of the museum staff and volunteers that made the ice cream social event at the museum on July fourth, a success despite the weather. It was a wonderful, community oriented event, and I think everybody had a lot of fun and a lot of delicious ice cream. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item nine is unfinished business. This evening we have none. Agenda item ten is new business. Ten A is the review and possible action relating to a request to purchase portable radios using state grant funds at a cost not to exceed twenty nine thousand, six hundred fifty seven dollars and seventy six cents.
Hello, everyone. Earlier this year, the state announced funds they were going to disperse to all law enforcement agencies across the state. Every agency is getting a little bit different amount as a calculation based off of crime and population. So under the tribal and local law enforcement agency initiative program, our agency is being awarded thirty three thousand eight hundred and sixty six dollars and ninety two cents. It's a grant, but it's not competitive. So I didn't have to write for the grant to get it. The state is awarding it to us. However, because it's not competitive, there's a lot of things that have to go along with it where you can only use it for certain stuff. One of the things that has been worrying me over the last year and a half is a transition of the radio system through the county, which all of the agencies kind of connect to. And with that transition, we bought all new mobile radios for squad cars last year. And we also upgraded our dispatch center so we would stay compliant. However, we did not upgrade our portable radios, the radios the officers carry on their belt and you see them talk at their chest. So our dispatch can communicate and the officers can communicate with the county and all other police officers in the county if they're in their squad. But if they're out on foot, when this transition happens, our officers will be kind of on a, what I would call a communications island. They would only be able to talk to our dispatcher or our officers and no one else. And in a community like us and in a county like this, we, we rely on everybody through mutual aid. So we help the county, the county helps us. We help Jefferson, Lake Mills. We all work together at times during emergencies or large scale events. And so I don't want to be on an island. So when this, the funds came out, I wasn't sure what we'd be able to use them for. And the state finally, a couple of weeks ago, announced that portable radios would be one qualified item that we could use that money for. So I want to move forward and buy a large portion of the portable radios that we need. Sixteen of our twenty-two I can use to use the, the funds to purchase those. That means that I can get a portable radio in the hands before the transition with the county and all of my patrol officers and all of my patrol supervisors. And then come the new year with capital improvements, we can buy the last couple for like me and the detectives because we can make do for now. So I'm looking to get approval to buy sixteen of the portable radios for an amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. And use that state grant funds to, to make that purchase. We have to make the purchase first and then we can get reimbursement after. So I'm hoping September, October, everything will be done and we'll have that money back before we hit our end of the year is the goal. And I will still have a little bit of money left over. We have a whole nother year to figure out what the best thing to spend that money on is. And right now I think the big item is the portable radios and getting that taken care of. And then we'll look at the remaining funds in a couple of months from now, when things kind of, we complete these different projects. Any questions?
Mason, can you turn on your microphone? I'm sorry.
I'm glad you explained that the, the transition we had already done with the squad radios. Cause I was reading this and thinking, didn't we already do this just a couple of years ago? But, but you explained that these are for the belt radios.
Yeah, portable and mobile. Took me a while to figure out what the two meant as well, but the mobile radios in the car portable is on the body.
Got it. Thank you.
Obviously getting to approve funding for something that is coming from an external source and, and now freeing up something in the, the CIP is, is great. So I moved to approve the purchase of sixteen portable radios and other necessary items from general communications for twenty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents to be reimbursed through the tribal and local law enforcement agency initiative program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Ten B is the review and possible action relating to the purchase transit van for the water utility from Griffin Ford for fifty-one thousand six hundred eight dollars and eight cents.
Yeah, thank you. This was budgeted CIP purchase. We're moving, this van actually is a little bit of a new thing for the water utility. We're going to give it a try and see it's covered, obviously gets better gas mileage than what we have now with the Ford F-150s or three, three-fifties that we have. And if this works out for us, we're going to move to what would be a more efficient vehicle for us. We had two different quotes for this one from Ewald and one from Griffin Ford here in Fort Atkinson. The Griffin Ford quote was slightly cheaper. So staff would be seeking approval from council to move forward with that purchase fifty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Sorry, go ahead. Probably same question. I was just going to ask, can you just confirm where the little over sixty-six hundred dollar difference from actual costs versus what was in the CIP? Where that will be coming from?
Good question. I, I think that's going to come just from our, our general water utility balance. So that rate of return that we have each year is what we're allowed to, sort of the money we're allowed to make, I guess, in plain terms. So that those funds will take care of that. And I believe this was, this was a long time in coming. So I think the cost increases that we're seeing over what we had budgeted are a result of the, what we're all experiencing right now with respective vehicles.
I actually, I was asked, going to ask about something slightly different. The, the transit van rather than a, a regular truck that had previously been requested, is this is this going to be used to transport crews or is there a specific need there?
Yeah, the idea, the concept idea when we first started discussing this was that this would provide an enclosed workspace. So we'd be able to house tools in here and make it a truck that would be taken out on water main break calls. The discussions actually kind of developed even beyond that to where we were talking about the need in the winter time in particular to have specialized tools to be able to work inside a climate controlled space, if you will. And then we started talking also about the considerable gas savings that we have with these vehicles. So they're a bit cheaper. I believe these, the F-two-fifties and three-fifties that we drive now are, are upwards of seventy thousand dollars. Don't quote me on that as a recent number. I don't know where they're at. But there were a number of things sort of lining up with, hey, we should really try these and, and see how they function. If they function well, we may be purchasing those for all of our replacement vehicles.
Got it. Great.
I move to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Ford Transit T-two-fifty from Griffin Ford for fifty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eight cents to be paid for through the water utility CIP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Ten C is the review and possible action on the replacement of the rotating assembly pump. Total cost of eleven thousand six hundred fifty dollars from Well Water Solutions.
Yeah, so we have behind you four pumps in the main station that are booster pumps. Two of those pumps, the, all of those are fifty years old and they're all ready to be replaced. It was recommended in the, the water system master plan that was presented to council last August. The two pumps that do the majority of the work run at relatively low speeds. One of those pumps went out two months ago completely. So we continued to run the second one in order to meet the booster needs that we have for the, mainly the north side of the city here. That one went down a week and a half ago. The part that is broke is the actual impeller. So the mechanical part, not the electrical part, the actual motor. So investing in the impeller is not throwing good money after bad. We do want to replace, actually remove all four of these and replace them with three pumps that are more modern and are variable frequency drive pumps, meaning they don't turn all the way on at once. They sort of ramp up slowly and build pressure and then back off. But without going into too many gory details about it, we can't be without one of those two functional booster pumps. So the one that was down requires a complete motor rebuild. We would like to keep that at bay until we can invest money in the longer term solution. But this pump that went down recently just simply needs that impeller taken care of. We did talk to two different companies because they are so old, the one company said we would not work on it. We can't get parts for it. Waterwell Solutions fabricates their own parts. You may have heard that before. We had that come up, I think it was with the Jones well, well, five down at Jones Park, similar situation there with some parts. So they're able to come in and actually machine what we need in terms of parts from their own shop and, and fix these pumps for us. So we'd like to move forward with, with that expenditure, eleven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to Waterwell Solutions to hopefully limp us through with that pump until we can get a better long-term solution for all of those down there at the main station.
Would that also be coming out of the water utility balance?
That is a budgeted amounts or budgeted account and it's in your memo. I can't remember if it was mains or reservoirs or pumping something along those lines. Yeah. So we, we do budget for that. I do think this may, well, it will be close as to whether this puts us over budget at the end of the year. Because this was not an anticipated expense, but that's the correct place to, to draw the money from.
Well, it's not fun when these unexpected expenses come up. At least this is a relatively, you know, low dollar figure. We're not talking hundred thousand dollars, talking about eleven thousand dollars. So I'll make the motion to approve the replacement of the rotating assembly pump for a total cost of eleven thousand six hundred fifty dollars from Well Water Solutions to be paid for due to water utility reservoir maintenance account.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to agenda item eleven miscellaneous. This evening we have none. Agenda item twelve claims appropriations and contract payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
I would move to approve the list of verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorized Payment.
We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. Motion carries. That takes us to agenda item thirteen, which is adjournment.
They move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. My only request is Bruce, you gotta hit the gavel at the end of this. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Love it.
He almost cracked it, Chris.
Uh-oh.